Modify the agenda, I would like to remove section G. Remove section J. Add an item for the Warren County Middle School copy release. And then also, we'll have to come back to 1A at the end for the personnel report. Did you get that, Mr. Grant?
Yes. Yes, just give me a...
Sorry, that was a lot. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed now? Thank you. Okay, first up this evening, we had the speed camera enforcement, and that's Chief McGillis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Boy, I didn't realize that this little project was going to cause so much of a consternation, I guess, with the public. I'm essentially here tonight to answer some questions, answer whatever questions you may have about this. It's been in front of town council, and a couple of work sessions, a town council meeting. I feel like we've explained the program as completely as it can be explained, but I just wanted to make myself available to answer any questions. Again, town council's still batting, batting it around deciding which way they want to go with it, but I understand that there are more questions, and I'd be happy to answer any of those.
Well, I think from our side as a school board, we just thought this was a different place, a different audience to hear it, since we are talking about our school zones, and just so parents and our community members can be aware of which school zones we're talking about, and just sort of a little brief synopsis.
We decided on four locations. We weren't going to try to do all of them at one time. We figured we'd start with the four where we kind of have the most issues, that we typically see, some of the bigger roads with the higher speed limits, more frequently traveled roads. So it's actually Skyline Middle School, Rusty Jeffries Elementary School, AS Roads, and Leach Run, Warren County Middle. So there was a speed study done, there was five days' worth of data, four of those days school was in session, one of them was not. But the numbers were fairly, I wouldn't say shocking, I'm not shocked by it, but I think a lot of people probably would be. I get complaints about speed in town every day, and a lot of those speed complaints typically come from people who've witnessed this in school zones, and of course, they're concerned with children. So we just, we looked at it, we looked at several different outfits. This one seemed to make the most sense for us. They set up, the cameras only, only generate tickets for speeds in excess of 10 miles per hour. So, and most school zones are twenty, you know, a quarter of a mile to four tenths of a half a mile at most long. So I don't think it's really asking that much to slow down 10 miles per hour for a quarter of a mile. At that point, if you were going to be late for something, you were going to be late anyway. It's not, from my standpoint, it's never been about revenue. At least, our revenues, law and order, and safety and security, none of it impacts my budget at all. It's a, if there is a violation, it's vetted by a front row police officer, actually has to go through and look at the camera. The speed measurement equipment is calibrated every 35 minutes, and is validated twice a year, just, and it's the same technology that our officers use in their cars when they're writing ladder tickets. It's the same stuff, so there's no wonky new technology, it's the same type of technology that we utilize when we're actually out there physically doing, doing that job. So there's no real question with the technology. So that's, that's kind of where we started with it. It's a civil penalty, so if a person is caught speeding, it's a hundred dollar fine. It doesn't go against your license, no points are associated with it, and it's not even a criminal traffic violation, it's a, it's a civil, civil penalty.
So Chief, one of the things, you and I met, and I appreciate the meeting and the discussions that we have, and you are a great partner, and I enjoy working with you. You had mentioned and talked about a 60-day period. Can you inform the board kind of how that works out with the 60 days?
Sure. We're not trying to play stump to chump here, where you, you know, bang, got them, you know? It's, there's a 30-day period of public education, where there's, you know, Facebook website, news release material that comes out. We would do that campaign for 30 days, and then 30 days prior, after that, there would be warning citations that would be issued, so people were not surprised that this was going to be occurring. So that's, that's kind of leading up before the first ticket's ever written, there's 60 days' worth of warning and education that occurs prior to any of, anybody actually having to stroke a check.
Another question I've seen come up a couple of times is, the owner of the vehicle is the one getting the citation, so how will that work if, say, we have a senior high school student driving?
The parent can choose to allow their child to deal with that. They can make notice to the court that, hey, this wasn't me, this was my son, daughter, X, Y, Z, and they're the lucky winner of this situation. Or if it's, you know, you're kind of responsible for your vehicle. So there is that piece of it. But there is a mechanism, if the person chooses to have the driver be held responsible for it, they can contest that. So, and they can, they can actually contest some of those things through administratively, through the police department, before it ever goes to court. So, and if the person would, if a person decides that they were not speeding, and they wish to contest the ticket, they could go to court just like you would with any speeding ticket, and contest the ticket. So, and there would, there's no cost for that.
Is that going to be put in writing? First, let me say, nobody wants people speeding through school zones. And I know, I was one of the people that sent emails, and I assure you that not a single email that I sent was nasty. I brought copies of them, so you can read them. I simply sent links to other localities that have used this outside enforcement system. So for, for those in the room who don't know, essentially, we are giving permission for a private company to come in and set up these, these speed cameras, and they take a cut of the money that is generated from the tickets. So we're giving them permission to come in and profit off of our citizens speeding. My concerns were with, if everything works perfectly, it could be, it could be great. But it doesn't, it doesn't work perfectly, and that was my concern, was for our locality in general, was the links that I had sent to the, to council that I had concerns with were links to multiple different localities that have had class action lawsuits as a result of this company, and then of other similar companies. And where it seems to break down is that, in a school zone, you have your regular speed limit, and then on school days, when the lights are flashing, the speed limit is reduced, and so that's when people are speeding. And the study that this company came in and did is actually the perfect example of how this type of system breaks down. So we had Apple Blossom off for Friday the 5th, which was not originally on our school calendar. So I guess the school zone lights were flashing, but everybody knew that it was, the school was not session. So there were for Rusty Jeffries, 1,450 erroneous tickets written, or would have been written. So there were 1,450 people that were said in this company's report that they were speeding, when in fact, if it was not a school zone reduced speed limit, they would not have been speeding. At Warren County Middle, it would have been 773 false tickets, and then at Skyline Middle School, it was 421. I know you said AS Roads as well, but I didn't get those documents printed, so I can't say that number. But that's where these localities end up getting sued, is because Blue Line Solutions, they, as you said, our officer vets the tickets and signs off on them, and once the ticket then goes out, when these people get their ticket, and they say, hey, wait a minute, it says I got a ticket on May 5th for speeding in a school zone, but school wasn't in session, so I actually wasn't speeding. Well, Blue Line Solutions doesn't have that liability now, because they say, well, your officer signed off on it. So that's how we've had all these different localities get sued. One locality, it was seven, $70,000 that they came back retroactively, another it was $2 million, another it was a $3 million error for error tickets given. And I guess my concern as well was, and you did, you definitely addressed a lot of my concerns when talking to town council at the last town meeting, but the answers that I guess Blue Line is giving you and that you're presenting don't match what's actually in the contract with them, so is there a way to get their contract updated to include?
Yes, ma'am.
To include that stuff?
What we're looking at right now would be modified, because there's a couple of, there are some concerns.
Yeah.
But like, at the Apple Blossom Day, those tickets wouldn't be written, because we know there's no school that day.
We hope not.
We know, we know that there, we know that when there's a two-hour delay, we know when there's a teacher work day, we know when there's an early release. So those tickets, you know, we would be programming the cameras, so that they, they won't be working unless the school lights are flashing. So we can...
Then we mess up, and we have the lights flashing?
There's always, there's always an opportunity for human error, whether we're relying on technology to do part of the job or not. We do that every day when we write tickets.
Right.
But, yeah, so, and that's, that's the, that's the piece where it would, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that when, when we're doing our vetting process, we're taking all of that into account when we're doing it. Yep. So that's 100, that is 100% on us to take care of that part of it. And that's where, you know, you wouldn't have to pay a ticket if, or even go to court. If you get a ticket and you know there's no school that day, you would contact the police department, and we would assess whether or not the ticket had been issued in error.
Now, the company would still collect their fee, though, on that ticket?
Not for that ticket.
Not for the ticket that is written, but then you guys revoke?
Nobody, well, there would be, there would be no, you, you wouldn't have to pay that ticket if we, if we voided that ticket because it was erroneously issued.
Right, I know we wouldn't, but from what I had read in the contract, I think you guys would still be on the hook for that percentage now.
No, no ma'am.
And then the other one that I was hoping could get added into the, the contract is the court cost. So it's a hundred dollar fine, but $79 court cost to go in and prove your innocence, and there seems to be conflicting information about whether or not, because I was told you would still be using the court's time, and say you would still be responsible for paying a $79 court cost fee. So that, that puts the citizen at a, at a disadvantage if they go, if they have a gamble, they, they can either go in and attempt to prove their innocence, which goes against our constitutional right of innocence until proven guilty.
Right.
And so they, they run the gamble of, I'm going to have to pay $179 if I go in and try and fight this thing, or best-case scenario, I'm found innocent, I still have to pay $79. So can we write that into the contract that we will not have to pay?
Look, if court doesn't, if you're found not guilty in court, they do not charge you a court fee.
See, I've experienced otherwise, but...
It's what the town attorney, that's what the town attorney explained to us the night, the other night when we were having a conversation.
Oh, I heard, yeah, no, I heard what he explained, but I, as Mayor Cockrell had pointed out, like, there, there has been conflicting responses on that. So is there a way for us to get that in writing, that tickets, that the person is found not guilty, they do not have to pay that $79 court cost?
Well, that wouldn't come from Blue Line, that would have to come from someone in the courts.
Right, right.
To get that assurance.
I'm just saying, like...
And I can't, you'd have, those are questions for the town attorney.
Okay. And then I guess the other thing that was rather alarming to me was that, my, my thought process was, I know we have a lot of students in our school who, who are low-income, and if these tickets are not paid, Blue Line can actually pull lien against their vehicle. I would hate to see a family have their car taken away over something like this. And then the other thing is, is for everybody who hasn't read the, the contract is, so it's two years, Blue Line puts the equipment here, we have to have it in place for two years, if it's removed, it costs the community $300,000 to remove it. And if state law changes, which it might, and if things flood Republican in the, in November, and the allowance of speed cameras is removed, and we're required by law to remove them, there is the possibility that the town is on the hook for the $300,000, because in the contract, it, it still counts as a termination. So is that something you can change in the contract?
Yes, I've already spoken with them, and they would, they would, they wouldn't, if the, if legislation were to change and make the speed cameras unusable, then it would not, that retroactive fee would not occur. And that, that fee's also, it's prorated, so if, if we have them for a year, if we have them for six months, if we have them for 18 months, they can't come in on day 700 and charge us $300,000 for all the cameras. It would be a pro, a prorated fee up to that point.
And I did, I did hear you say that in the county meeting, too, but again, it's not in their contract. It doesn't say anything about prorated.
Right.
It just says, any, early termination, you have the, the amount. So that's one of the things they're tweaking as well in the contract?
If, if the town council decides to move forward with it, yes.
Okay. Is it one, could you ask them to?
Oh, we, we've had these conversations, yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I just try and think this through, and find every possible way that this could backfire, and it was reading all the lawsuits. I'm nervous, but...
Chief, I have a couple of questions for you. So in our conversation, you'd mentioned that, that some of our speed zones would have to be put to B-Dot standards, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And this company takes care of that, so it doesn't cost the school district any, any funds to, to make sure that those are, are set up properly, correct? And then, could you also share, you gave me two studies from two communities, and, and that during the 60-day time period, what those, what that percentage of, I guess, speeders went down? Could you share that?
I believe it was the town of Bridgewater, that they just, they had just done this project, and within the first nine, 60 days, before they even started writing the tickets, the, the amount of speed violations dropped by 92%. I mean, that's why we really started looking at this, because it's...
And then I think you mentioned With County, right?
With, yeah, With County is, is where the cooperative contract actually came from. I think their rate was, I think after they started writing tickets, it was there, I want to say six months in, they, they had a 94% reduction in speed violations in school zones. And that's why we ended up where we're at, just looking for a, a better solution. You know, we've got 10, 10 schools. It, it's hard to have, you know, if you put a cop at every one of them, and they're trying to keep up with writing tickets manually, they might get, might get three during the school zone time, because of the time it takes to write the tickets. So you, you're only so effective, and, you know, in modern progressive times, we try to leverage technology to assist us in, in doing our jobs, and that's, that's what we started looking into trying to do, accomplish.
And I want to thank you for trying to protect our students and, and, you know, working on this, because I know you guys patrol the streets for us, and, and I know every time that Mr. Mitchell has something, that he, he calls you, hey, we've got some speeding going on over here, and you guys go and address that, and so I, I appreciate the job that you do for, for the students in Warren County.
Well, thank you, we appreciate the partnership, so. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming in.
Certainly. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, next up this evening, we have community participation. It is the duty of the chairperson of the school board, with assistance from the county sheriff as necessary, to conduct the meeting in an orderly manner, and to limit discussion to topics relevant to the issue before the board for consideration. Persons addressing the school board are advised to limit their remarks to those relevant to the pending items. No persons in attendance shall be allowed to voice remarks except as recognized by the chairperson or the clerk of the board, after audibly stating their name and whom they represent, if applicable. No person shall bring into the boardroom any sign, banner, or other such item which would interfere with other members of the public in seeing, hearing, or otherwise participating in the meeting, provided that models, photos, maps, charts, drawings, and other demonstrative materials intended for use in a presentation by a specific person shall be permitted. Upon recognition by the chair or the clerk of the board, the speaker shall address the school board chair, confine their comments to issues of public concern relating to the operation of Warren County Public Schools, refrain from words or statements which, from their usual construction and common acceptance, are defamatory to specific individuals, or tend to violence or breach of the peace, refrain from obscenity and vulgarity, stay within allotted time, stop speaking when directed by the chairperson. Groups or individuals in the audience creating an atmosphere detrimental to or disturbing the orderly conduct of the meeting will be asked to refrain from such conduct once. Any additional disturbance after the warning will not be tolerated, and the chairperson will ask the county sheriff to remove the individual, group, or clear the boardroom so the board can conduct the business of the school division. When recognized, please state your name for the record, whether you are a county resident, parent of a Warren County Public School student, or an employee of the school division, and limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Grant, did anyone sign up this evening?
We have two. Maria O'Brien?
Okay, Ms. O'Brien.
Hello, good evening. My name is Maria O'Brien. I'm a Warren County resident in the Fork District, and I am the mother of a child in the special needs program in Warren County Public Schools. There are two main things I wanted to address tonight, and one of them is the cameras in the special needs classroom, which I understand is an ongoing conversation, and the second is applying for funding to transfer a student when the public school system is failing him into a private school. As the mother of a special needs student who has challenges with communication, I sincerely support the installation and monitoring of cameras in special needs classrooms, so that students have more protection from abuse that has occurred in the Warren County Public School System, and also in other school districts around the country, I know we're not the only one. Children with special needs, especially those whose special needs involve the ability to communicate, cannot be expected to perfectly articulate what has happened in the classroom, or their interactions with teachers. Further, they may not recognize that what has happened to them, or another student, is wrong, especially if it's something that's ongoing. They may think that they are to blame, they're, you know, victims often take that on. So in order to protect the children, we need to have something that's more objective than knowing what a child is saying to a parent. And again, with different situations in the home, that communication can break down at home as well. Children can also be threatened by a teacher not to say anything. So for those reasons, I think it's imperative that we do introduce cameras into special needs classrooms for the protection of children. As a side note, this could also be helpful for teachers, who could be potentially falsely accused, or themselves to be threatened by older students in the high school situation. So I don't think this has to be parents versus teachers, it can be something that's mutually beneficial. And as the sheriff noted, just having the cameras stops the speeding, or maybe just having the cameras increases our, you know, our teachers' ability to maintain the situation without hurting the children. Secondly, I would like to formally request from the school board to communicate to me and to other parents, the process to receive federal funding in order to pay for an education for a child to be transferred out of the public school system if it's failing them. Every child has a legal right to an appropriate education. My son has not had an IEP for two years, and even with the IEP, and we're giving it time, we're working through the system, but he's not receiving the education that he needs, deserves, and is legally entitled to. His, his window's closing, he's turning 13 years old. My son's legal right to, to a fitting education tailored to his special needs is not being met in the Warren County Public School System. In fact, when I retained an IEP advocate from Richmond, she told me off the record, I apologize for conveying this, but she said that she had never seen such incompetence in any school district of which she had been involved, out of the many, many school districts and many counties that she worked with parents in our state. Trust me, that was humbling, too. I love Warren County. But, and you know, we'll take it with a grain of salt, but she was astounded by the incompetence that she saw in his IEP, and during the IEP meetings. Despite, I'm sure, well-intentioned staff, many of whom I love dearly, really appreciated their work, they simply didn't have the knowledge or experience that she considered very basic.
Ms. O'Brien?
Um, am I timed?
Yes, but we'll take your, I'm sure Dr. Ballinger and Ms. McDonald is back there, and she'll get your contact information, so we'll want to follow up with you on that. Thank you so much.
Sarah Griffith?
Good evening, my name is Sarah Griffith. I'm a parent of four students who graduated from Warren County Public Schools. One student is still in school, does have a 504 plan under federal legislation. So I'm speaking tonight as a parent, and also collectively from some of your local educators who cannot be here because they're on summer break. First of all, I would like to let you know that a growing number of our educators are becoming concerned with the conversations surrounding these policies. Several of them cannot be here tonight. So I, the very first thing I want to say, because this is a, a public meeting, is that the teachers that serve your students in this county, we've spoken a lot to several of them, we have very strong relationships, and we continue to build those relationships with the families that we serve. I can tell you firsthand that I take tremendous pride in teaching and caring for my students, because as often we've heard in professional development seminars, parents and guardians send us their best student, and it is our duty to treat those students with the utmost dignity and respect. It's also our duty to return them to you better than we received them, with more knowledge and skills than they have when they first came to us. So if you hear nothing else that I say tonight, please hear how much Warren County Public Schools teachers, several of whom are here tonight, care about your students, and the role that their parents and guardians make to the best decisions for them, even if this policy is adopted. Sorry, I'm nervous. The first issue is that, first and foremost, we feel this is a very discriminatory policy. Our students already struggle to find their voice and a place in a general education setting. This would further segregate them from their peers. Students will know the cameras are there. I work in a high school. They are very bright, even the ones that do not speak. They will know that they are there, they have anxiety and millions of issues that may not want them to enter a classroom when they see the cameras. Secondly, I take a bit of an issue with the terminology "special needs classrooms," because our students should not be contained to one classroom. Our students are dispersed throughout the building for much of their day. So unless we're going to put cameras in every single part of that building, I do not feel that this policy is going to protect them in the intent that it has. Secondly, there's many legal issues that could develop, and I'm not talking about the apparent issues that our attorneys can see just by reading policies from other states, which three other states only have policies, Texas, West Virginia, and Georgia. I would like to, the board to look at information on if that policy has had negative outcomes in lawsuits, I think that's important to know, because if it doesn't exist, I would think that potentially it could at one point. I think there are other issues. I'm not an attorney, but in my reading of IDEA, and I've been a special education teacher for several years, I have an administration degree and a special education degree. In my interpretation of IDEA, it will require all parties to be notified and release a sign prior to release of footage, including their child, at another parent's request.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Will you take your time?
Oh, I did?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, thanks. I don't think my timing is working good.
Is there anyone else out there this evening that would like to speak, though? Sure.
Hi, my name is Joseph Adams. I am the Skyline Middle School Department Chair for Special Education, as well, if, if approved tonight, I will be the Secondary Learning Center coach for secondary schools here in Warren County. I, I just wanted to ask a few questions, to propose a few questions as you continue with this discussion. The first one is, is yes, my students are with me for English and Math, the ones that are determined for the learning center, and the way the policy's written, my classroom would be considered a self-contained special education classroom. Having a camera in my room, I'm, it's fine, you know, they're going to see me teach, they're going to see my kids grow, and they're going to see the amazing activities we do in my room. But at the end of the policy, it says it's here to protect the well-being and health of special education students. Where is that protection in their science class, their history class, their electives? I teach six... I teach sixth, seventh, and eighth grade special education students, some with severe cognitive impairments and some with behavioral supports that I'm bringing back from Brighter Futures. They're in 15-plus different classrooms just in my building. Where is their protection in those rooms? You know, they're protected for only two hours with a camera in my room, but there's five other hours in a day. There's going to be discussion to protect those students in those classrooms. What if a parent has a concern that something happened in science class, calls me or the admin, and is like, hey, I want to see footage? There is no footage, because the policy only states self-contained special education classrooms. What about those special education students that never attend those classrooms? They're in inclusion classrooms with support there, but they never enter a special education self-contained classroom. Where's their protection? So I would really love for you guys to have this discussion, but to look into this policy more, because you're really only hitting 10% of the special education students. If we're going to do this, and we're going to adopt this, and we're the first county even in this area, we need to make sure all the special education students are protected, and that would mean putting cameras in every single classroom. Because some students, some teachers teach special ed this year, they might not next year, and a new team of students, or a team of teachers, might teach those students. So we need to look into protecting all special education students, not just those ones that would be defined in a self-contained classroom. Because as Ms. Griffith said, our students do go out. My students spend double, if not triple the amount of time out of my classroom they do than with me in my classroom. So I would really love for you guys to look at that if moving forward with this policy, figure out how we can put cameras in every classroom to protect every special education student and pre-K students. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak? Okay.
So name and where I'm from. So Shay Steelkun, I'm the one that's been emailing you guys. I am a Warren County resident. I have a son that is at Skyline Middle, who's seventh grade. He is in inclusion, so that's how I know a lot about this. So I'm not against the cameras. We have chit-chatted a lot, specifically you. Thank you so much for all your time, even at 10 o'clock at night. Again, I mirror the same thing. I want my child, he's in all classrooms, and I want him to be protected in every classroom. Same thing goes along with every single child. I personally, pre-COVID, got to even know a lot of the children that he's in class with. There are some children that do undress during the school day. Is that footage going to be protected? I want to make sure that none of this gets out places. I understand that through the policy, that the principal would be privy to this information, that other parents would be privy to this information. I did see that the photo, that their images would be blurred, but it said possibly be blurred. It doesn't say that it would be for sure blurred. I'm worried about my child being in a fishbowl. I don't want my child to be in the experiment for this, and then something go completely wrong. So that's my biggest issue with that. I also don't want teachers to feel the need to leave this county because they are under such scrutiny. I have been very blessed to have a great team all of my kids' entire life, and I'm very nervous because we did, his pre-K teacher is no longer in the county, and I'm nervous that we're going to lose even more amazing teachers in this county over one incident. So I'm hoping that we do make sure that this footage and these children are protected, and that it's just not out there willy-nilly. Because I did, I did have a conversation with the Department of Education, and they did let slip that other counties have had cameras before and footage home ransom in places, and I don't want that to be a thing either. And I just don't want my child's, you know, bad day out on the internet. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? The speaker.
Jane Baker, retired principal of Blue Ridge Technical Center. What I would like to share concerning the cameras is that we have had cameras in classrooms at Blue Ridge Tech Center at least for the last 15 years. And when I say classrooms, they're in our labs, such as our automotive lab, electricity lab, those types of classrooms where students are using a lot of different equipment. What I would say is, that footage is never accessed unless there is some type of accident or a reason for it to be accessed. I would also say that there is more likelihood of a student's features and whatever we want to say, whatever people are afraid of, actions and activities being put out onto the web or out into the public by other students with cell phones than there are those cameras that would be in the classroom. And again, we serve all students, whether they're special needs students or regular ed students that come in, and we've just not had issues with it. I've never had law enforcement access anything on their own or because they went above me and made requests somewhere. I can think of only one time where access was actually given to law enforcement, and that was at the parent's request because they were investigating a situation that would have led to charges. It was the video footage itself that showed that the situation was unfounded and did not occur as had been described by a student whose parents were concerned. So while this does need to continue to be in conversation and to be thought through, I just wanted to share with you what our experience at Blue Ridge Tech Center has been with the cameras that are in place.
The speaker. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Next, we have the consent agenda. Is that a motion? I need that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion on that? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Great, thank you. Next, we have reports. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to welcome everybody tonight to our meeting. So this week, we've had a fun week with our administrators. This is our administrative retreat. We started on Monday. We started with instruction, so we covered various topics, and I appreciate Ms. Bragg and her team. You know, they had some, basically some breakout sessions and different presenters to talk about things, so it was really nice to really put the focus back on education, because I'll be honest, since I've been here, that came COVID, and that was always the focus, and so we have really got to put instruction back into the forefront. On day two, we had a title line training from our attorney. Also, we had legal updates from our attorney. Then, Ms. McDonald had some special education. Ms. Lee and Ms. Chris, they presented, along with Ms. Kanesh, talking about student support teams. Then we had our mandated reporting. ESS was there April. She's a great presenter. You know, that is something that I have done with my administrative team for the last three years, since I've been here, and so we always do that yearly, and so she was there again yesterday, yeah, yesterday to present that. Then today, we had the Front World Police Department. They came in to talk about investigations, to go over that. Then we had Mr. Grant presented on technology. Mr. Smith and Mr. Lee, they discussed policy and human resources. Then we had Mr. Garrett from the Boy Scouts. He was there and just kind of talked to the group, and he actually provided lunch for us today, so we want to thank them for that. And then this afternoon, we had our first meeting with our Administrator Academy, the WCPS Administrator Academy, and Dr. David Martin is doing that. So he was there, and we had some fun activities today, so it was good. Tomorrow is the last day of our administrative retreat. We will be at Skyline High School. We are going to be doing some active shooter drills and just active drills with our partners, the Warren County Fire and Rescue. That will be with the Warren County Sheriff's Office, Front World Police Department. We did send out a notice to families. It's on our website, so when you go to the website, there's the pop-up. But I did just want to remind everybody tonight that on Thursday, July 13, 2023, an emergency response training exercise at Skyline High School will begin at 8:00 a.m. This training exercise will involve the Front World Police Department, Warren County Sheriff's Office, Warren County Fire and Rescue, and Warren County Public School staff. During this training exercise, there will be an increased presence of emergency vehicles and personnel around the high school and along Skyline Vista Drive. Skyline High School will be closed to the public. Its offices will be closed because of the activities that we will have going on there, and they will reopen on Friday. So that was the message that we sent out to parents. It's out on social media. We just want to let the public know that that is happening. As we move into July here, we will start our new teacher orientation. The first day is Wednesday, July 26. We will kick off all of our new teachers. Since we do not have a meeting, I would like to talk to the board maybe about having a special meeting, maybe on the 25th or maybe that week before, if we have any new hires so that they can go to that training. So please consider that. Then our staff development starts on August the 2nd with our staff. I did want to give a couple of dates to board members, and of course invite, you should be receiving an invitation, but I didn't want to talk to you about it tonight. August the 4th, that is our convocation and Teacher of the Year. So convocation is again at Skyline High School this year, and it starts at 8:00. Dr. Martin's going to help me kick that off as well, so it'll be interesting to see what we have there. Now, we also have...
Dr. John Amro.
Dr. Amro. He will be our keynote that day. Then at 11:30, we transition to Shenandoah, and we're going to have our Teacher of the Year luncheon, where we celebrate all of our Teachers of the Year for this last year. So we will have convocation at 8:00, Teacher of the Year Luncheon at 11:00, out of the golf course, where we have that. Also, on August the 7th, that is back-to-school night. So schools and offices will not open until 12:00 that day, because we will go from 12 to 7:00. And back-to-school night will start at 4:00. So from 4:00 to 7:00, we will have back-to-school night. But offices, its teachers are working until 7:00 that night, and administrative staff and at the schools, we will not pull anybody in until 12:00 on that day. So, and then of course, school starts on August the 9th. So we're getting ready to get things rolling, and just wanted to give you some of those important dates so that you're aware of them. Be looking for your invitations if you've not received them yet on those dates, and if you'd like, I can send them out in an email or, you know, I know that, I know Hope's been doing a lot of that with convocation. I know, I think Karen was sending out invitations today as well, so we're trying to get that information out to you. Also, the one thing that I did want to mention, we have our convocation on the 4th, with our luncheon on the 4th. That Saturday, Saturday the 5th, we are having a kickoff of WCPS Community Fund Day. That will be held at Warren County High School. We will do this from 10:00 to 4:00. We're going to have a multitude of vendors for indoor craft shows, Samuel Library prize wheel, live music through the day, also motorcycle ride for Humane Society with the shotgun L1C, Shenandoah National Park, bounce houses, obstacle courses, climbing walls, duck painting, face painting, just a lot of things to just, you know, we are continuing our theme this year with family engagement and bringing our families back into the school, and so this is something that all schools will be at. We're going to, you know, even Central Office, we're going to rotate in, and we're going to have a little booth fair that we'll just set up, where people can come up and talk to us, and we'll be around that day. So looking forward to our Community Fund Day event on that Saturday, August the 5th. So I welcome everybody to come out that night as well. That is all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Ballinger. School board reports. We'll start with Ms. Low.
I don't have a lot this time since we're in the summer, but I did get to attend the Blue Ridge Environmental Governor's School closing session. I think it was last week or the week before, so it was good to see what they had been up to those students, including some of our students here in the county. So that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Low. Ms. Salins.
I just wanted to start by thanking everybody for the civil conversation about the cameras. I think this is obviously a work in progress, and everybody has the best intentions, and this is the time to have these open and honest conversations and collaborate. So I would encourage anybody in the community who would like to have their opinion heard or their thoughts, maybe if what you're thinking about hasn't been expressed yet that you've heard, you know, please, now's the time to let us know. And then, really the only other thing, I feel like it's been forever since we've been here, I've had the opportunity over this last month and a half to have a nice visit at Blue Ridge Technical Center and then also at Warren County High School. So, thank you. That is all.
Mr. Rinaldi.
I don't have much to report. I've been out of town off and on for the last couple of weeks. I am really happy that Dr. Martin is running the new Administrator Academy. That's a great, that's a great deal there. For y'all that don't know, Dr. Martin, he is a fantastic individual. I had the opportunity to work for him for eight years, so he's a nice guy. That's all I really have.
So, Mr. Rinaldi, when I was talking to him today, he said that you better be there because you're going to be in part of his presentation, so you have to be there. Convocation on the 8th, so put that in your calendar.
Just tell him to send me the invitation.
He's planning on having you join, so...
He'll make fun of me. That's why he wants me there, so...
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi.
Thank you.
I don't have much to add either. On June 15th, we had the Mountain Vista Governor's School Governing Board meeting. We met at Rappahannock County last month, and so basically the updates from there, they just completed their five-year site evaluation from VDOE, so, and I have to share with the rest of the board, basically, the whole packet of evaluation that the school went through. But the summary of it was that Mountain Vista Governor's School meets or exceeds standards in every category except this one category that's more student-oriented, because the school is divided across two campuses at Laurel Ridge and at Warrenton. So the students wished that they had more collaboration together as one whole Mountain Vista Governor's School versus the two separate campuses. So Dr. Huff, being the outgoing person that she is, she's, you know, figuring out how those students can kind of really get together a little bit more throughout the year, but everything else in the evaluation had high marks, and they have some plans with where they'll need to improve over the next five years and where they're going to go from here. All 211 spots have been filled for the 23-24 school year. The first day of school for Mountain Vista starts school two days before hours, so they'll be back to school on August 7th, and the next time we'll meet will be August 17th at Warren County at our central office. Besides that, I also appreciate the camera discussion this evening, and actually, the camera discussion that I've had the opportunity to speak with several teachers, several parents over the past multiple weeks since this first came up. Lots of varying viewpoints and seeing lots of really good input from everybody, and that's really what we need, because when I first heard about the cameras, I, as a parent, thought that it sounded like, you know, a great idea, and I didn't see everybody's aspect of it. And so, of course, we're still kind of working our way through it and looking forward to some more discussion on it as we go through this evening and the next couple of board meetings, and thank you all for that. Next up, we have our action agenda, which the first item this evening is going to be Quiet Minds Psychotherapeutic Services and Warren County Public Schools MEO. and Warren County Public Schools MOU.
Good evening, Board, I have two renewals, anybody use them, I will present. First one is Quiet Minds. Quiet Minds Therapeutic Services is a private agency that provides outpatient therapy and mental health services. At their request and in conjunction with Warren County Public Schools, therapists and staff of Quiet Minds, with parent permission, will provide therapeutic services to individual students enrolled within the Warren County Public School system. Fees for services will be billed through individual insurances, through self-pay, or through an agreement between Quiet Minds and Warren County. Students have received services with Quiet Minds in secondary schools for many years, the support and resources have benefited the students served.
Any questions from Ms. Low?
I move that the 2023-2024 Memorandum of Understanding between Warren County Public Schools and Quiet Minds Psychotherapie, Psychotherapeutic Services Incorporated be approved as presented, and the superintendent be authorized to sign the agreement.
Is there a second?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
I just wanted to point out again, parental permission, parental consent is, is part of it, so...
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you, Ms. McDonald, and your next MOU?
Yes, second is Skyline Cap Head Start. Warren County Public School works very closely with Skyline Cap Head Start in providing a preschool option for up to 40 students. The attached agreements outline work and procedures which include the referral process, disability services, communication, and shared leadership at the local level. There are two classrooms and modular trailers owned by Head Start that are housed at the local county. Again, the attachments you will find are the MOU for Warren County Public Schools, the Skyline Cap Contract and Agreement, the DPI, Skyline Cap Head Start MOU, and the in-kind contribution.
Any questions from Ms. McDonald? Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County School Board approve the Warren County Public Schools and Skyline Cap Contract, Warren County In-Kind Contributions, Special Education Memorandum of Understanding, and the Memorandum of Understanding between WCPS, DPI, and Skyline Cap Head Start.
Is there a second?
A second?
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Next up, we have Mr. Lee with the approval for a purchase over $15,000, and that's for Power School Unified Talent Services.
Good evening, I apologize I was not here for our last board meeting. I was in Blacksburg, Virginia, chaperoning 26 of our 6th through 12th grade students at the FFA convention. That was my first experience with the FFA convention, and it was, it was very awesome, I was very impressed, and those kids had the time of their life, so... We'd like to request the funds for the renewal of the Power School Unified Talent Software System in the amount of $20,668.26. Power School Unified Talent offers our paperless solution for application and hiring of employees, and also serves as a storage location for all of our employee records.
Any questions from Mr. Lee on this? Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the Power School Unified Talent Application Tracking and Employees Record System be renewed in the amount of $20,668.26.
Is there a second? A second? Any discussion on this? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next up, we have Policy GAE, and that's Mr. Smith.
Thank you, and good evening. Policy GAE Child Abuse and Neglect Reporting has been modified to require all school employees to report child abuse and neglect directly to the local Department of Social Services or to the Virginia Department of Social Services Toll Free Child Abuse and Neglect Hotline and to the person in charge of the school or department. The policy update also includes yearly training by all staff. Attached to that particular cover sheet is the, the policy from our legal team that would identify anything new, underlined in red, that would go into that policy.
Any questions from Mr. Smith?
It is the first reading, and normally, traditionally, we do three, technically, I think my policy...
Policy, you don't have to do two, but we do, we normally do three.
And you said this has already been reviewed by our attorneys?
So, our attorneys put this together, and, you know, you have the two copies. One is the red line where it shows the markup of our original policy, and then you have a clean version, so, so you can read the clean version there. And we wanted to make sure that it addressed our, some of the things that we had as far as from our conversation with that, where individuals report directly once they witness something. They can do it those, in those two manners, then they have to make sure that an administrator is told. Then also, you wanted to talk about the, the training requirement, that was added in there as well. Also, how they can communicate that, either through the portal that Mr. Grant has online, it can be an email, or if it's in, if it's a conversation that is had between the two individuals, there has to be documentation. And, and talking with my, my staff at the administrative, they want to put together a template so that one template is used at all schools. So, we're going to be working on a template for that. But, yeah, I believe that it addresses everything that the board had concerns about and the direction that the board wanted to go. So, unless you see something that, that is not in there that we discussed, let me know, or if it's not in that direction, let me know, and we can make sure that our, our attorneys can address that. But, they are the one that wrote the policy.
And training for our staff has already begun, actually this week, with our administration, Dr. Ballinger mentioned earlier in his report, our administrative staff. We've also have started to schedule meetings with the Department of Social Services at our school level as well as with our auxiliaries, food service, transportation, and maintenance.
So, with this new policy, they must report to social services themselves and then also to their...
Correct, because that is what we discussed, yes.
Right, 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 yeah.
Yes, ma'am, that is, that is exactly, so if you look at that first bullet, it says the shall immediately report the matter to the local Department of Social Services where the child resides and where the abuse or neglect is believed to have occurred, or to the Virginia Department of Social Services Toll Free Child Abuse and Neglect Hotline. And you can see that they took out the "or" and put that "and", now they have to then talk to the, their department chair, a person in charge of the school. So, they took out that "or" there, and with that "and", so now it creates to where any individual that, that they feel a call needs to be made, they have to make that call. And then they have to inform their...
Could we adjust, sorry, I was going to say, could we adjust the formatting? Like, right now, I think it's ambiguous if we mean the first one or the last two together, like, they adjusted the first one, have they satisfied that when we really mean you need to do one of these first two and the third one? Like, maybe we say that you needed to report to DSS either of these two ways and report to your, like, just so it's clear.
Oh, okay, so you're, you're talking about putting maybe the two bullets up there together, and then the "and" with the third, so just make it look a little more clear?
Yeah, it's easy to interpret, yeah.
That's fine.
And the contact information... The contact information for social services, will that be posted in the schools for this?
So, when we...
There's no confusion there?
When we talked to April, she's actually sent Ms. McDonald some flyers and some booklets, and so we're going to distribute those out to all staff members as well. You know, the number does have to be posted, we're going to make sure that, you know, it is sent out and that it's, that it's posted in relevant places, so the staff will...
And then, not to, not to add to your workload, it's just a thought. As we do these policy updates with regard to personnel, would it be too difficult to have the red line document emailed out to all of the staff just to get input on that? Just, I mean, I see how, you know, is there anything that seems ambiguous to them? Does anything seem to be left out or overkill, or just, just to get their input? Like, is many eyes on it, is that like a feedback?
That's a matter of pulling the button push, that's not really a...
Okay, so that's not going to, all right, I'm not dumping too much on you, okay, okay.
Anything for this one, please? And then next up is going to be Policy JOAA, classroom video surveillance, and that's Mr. Smith again.
Thank you. At the June 21st, 2023 School Board Work Session, members of the board discussed the topic of possibly adding cameras in preschool and special needs classrooms. As this discussion created much dialogue and questions regarding processes, it was recommended to develop a potential board policy related to cameras in the classroom. Our legal team has provided a draft policy for the board's review. The intro of the policy states that in order to protect the safety and security of students, employees, unauthorized visitors in certain school division classrooms, the school board requires video camera surveillance in all preschool and self-contained special education classrooms. The following policy is adopted to assist school administrators and determine when video footage may be shared, including parents and guardians, law enforcement officers, and other third parties. Any question, well, to the extent that this policy requires the creation of, they become part of student records. So, their release shall at times be consistent with applicable law, including FERMA. I'm not sure if you guys want to have dialogue about this, or if you want me to actually go down through the particular policy policies.
And if you don't mind if I interject?
No, you're, you're listening right ahead.
So, so this is not the first reading, I know, I think I even told Mr. Smith to put first reading on there, but this is just, you know, one, we, we still have not sent out our survey because, you know, we, as a board, we need to find who we need to send that to and, and things of that nature so that more data, more conversations are had. This is just the first version, and, you know, since there was, was not a lot for our attorneys to go off of, they, they did pull from various areas. And I think if you notice in this policy, and I think it might have been mentioned earlier tonight, it starts out talking about pre-K and special needs classrooms, but then towards the end, it just focuses on special needs. Well, that's because a lot of the verbiage was coming from a law in, in West Virginia. So, so that needs to be cleaned up, depending upon whatever direction the board, the board wants to go. This is the first draft, this is the first shot, this is, and this will not be what, you know, wherever you guys take us is, is where this will go. So, again, this is to put it in your, so you can have, lay eyes on it, so that you can start having those conversations, so you can start directing, all right, here's where we need to go with this policy, this is what we need to change. So, really, we will not put this as a first reading until you, as a board, are ready for it to be, to, to go up as a first reading. Because I think there's still a lot of questions and, and conversations that need to be had before we can say this is a first reading.
And I, I like how you did that, and I, I appreciate that very much, that we just put the draft up. I think there was some confusion that this had somehow already been passed for special needs classrooms and that this was like the first reading, but I, I like that we're trying to include the whole community in this conversation, and it will literally shape this, the direction of where this goes. And I'm, you know, I'm very interested to see the outcome of the, the survey. I think Mr. Adams has a great idea to have that survey go out and have this be a collaborative effort, so...
So, that was a little bit of a question on the, the survey and where we're going from there. That's something that we're planning on sending out to every teacher, but then can it be sorted to, these are the results from pre-K teachers or specifically special needs classrooms?
So, so I mean, in, in that, you're, you're going to have, depending upon what, what group you're wanting to, yes, we can put pre-K through 12, and somebody can select that, but is that going to tell you, is that a, a person that's in a self-contained classroom? Because they may be teaching 6, 7, and 8, and may have to select all of those, but, you know, as, as you heard tonight, they may only have those students for, for a couple of hours out of the day. So, then, do you want to give regular teachers an opportunity, if there's inclusion in there, you know, if they're, if they're pulling students into their classroom, for them to also say, well, I do inclusion? So, I think there's a lot of different ways we can go with a lot of different options. So, so that's where it's kind of getting to me, who do we send it out? How, really, it comes up to what data do you want? I think you need to tell us what data you're wanting to get so that then I can use these two guys over here to kind of help me get that data in the manner that you're wanting to be with. So, we can, we can put on there, you know, what class do you teach? We can ask another question, are you a self-contained teacher? Are you a regular, you know, are you a regular teacher? Or, you know, are you, you know, speech, are you, you know, things of those nature? I mean, it, it can be, and then, yes, we could sort and say, well, this group says this, this group says this, this group says that. You know, again, when we talk to parents, you know, are you wanting to, to put something on there? Was your child in pre-K last year, will your child be in pre-K this year? Is your child, does your child have an IEP or a 504, or neither? Or, you know, you, what data, Dr. Martin, you're wanting us to, to bring to you is really... And we have, you know, the one survey, and I've shared it with you guys to review and to, to make changes and things of that nature. So, really, I'm just needing a little more direction from the board as to what that is. But we're ready to, to probably push those questions out once we get it how you want it and who you want it to go to.
So, a few things. Where are we, do we know where we have cameras now? I didn't realize that we had cameras at Blue Ridge Technical Center in the classrooms.
Well, I didn't either, until, I think, just the other day, when Jane said something about it, so... So, so all of our schools are going to have, all of our schools are going to have, have cameras in the hallways and on the exterior. So, I think is what it sounds like, Tim, probably, no, Blue Ridge Tech is the only one that has them in some of their shop areas?
I wasn't even aware of that either.
Okay, so, so see, that is something, that is something nobody, nobody, nobody knew about as far as...
Yeah, it's not part of our network. All the other cameras are on our network, I think that's...
So, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that because I wasn't aware of, of cameras, you know, of course, being in, in the shops or anything of that nature.
Well, and someone had told me that we had some cameras in certain classrooms at Skyline High School as well. So, I don't, and maybe that's a good starting point to figure out, like, where we have what?
Yeah, no, I don't think we have any of the, any classrooms. The only one would probably be where, where Jane was talking about earlier. But we should not have in any other classrooms in any other buildings that I'm aware of.
And we do have on the buses.
On the buses, yeah, yeah.
Well, and I know one thing that wasn't really clear to me, and then when I started reading this, that became more clear, was we were talking at the last meeting about this being part of their student records and having to be maintained for a very, very long time, but then this, it specifies it's only three months, we're only holding on to this for three months, and it's only, it's only a student record if there is an incident that occurs that a student is disciplined for or something. That's the only time that we're going to have to maintain this long-term, is if there is an incident caught on video that results in an investigation or something coming of it, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. But, back to the surveys. See, I, I don't want to, I don't want to dump... See, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna dump a huge workload on Mr. Grant over there. But I'm almost inclined to, to think maybe we start off by having the conversation with the entire community, all the parents, all the teachers, and narrow it down from there. Because I mean, we're coming back to now, we're having discussions about, okay, well, maybe, maybe eventually we end up having, having cameras in all the classrooms because, you know, we don't wanna discriminate. So maybe we first just throw it out to, to everybody, see what, see what comes of that. And then narrow down from there.
Simon, one thing you could do is you could just take off pre-K and self-contained and just say, what are your thoughts about cameras?
Yeah, I think that's smart. And then do you have those checkboxes? Like you said, what grade level do you teach? Do you teach a self-contained classroom? Do you have a student that has an IP? What grade does your student have? That way, like you said, we can work out. I think that's, I agree.
That's more helpful because everyone's gonna have a different. But we can hear.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing, I hope they noticed that. Oh, here you do it. That's a survey guy. So what I'm hearing is we're going to, to remove any reference to just pre-K and self-contained. We're just gonna do more general about cameras period. Then we want to send it out to staff. We want to figure out what grade level they're at. Are they inclusion? Are they self-contained? Are they speech path or OT or something of that nature? Whatever it is, even administration, your administration. And, and that way as a board, as those come back in, you can narrow down who is this? What did this group say? Now to the parent side, you're wanting to send to all parents that basically getting their input on cameras in general in all classrooms, not just pre-K and, and self-contained. And then get their feedback as to their thoughts on cameras in every classroom. But then also at the same time, ask specific questions as to, does your child meet this criteria? Would this criteria? Would this criteria? And we could even ask parents, what grade is your child in? You know, is your child elementary, middle, high school? Do they receive any services? And, and something of that nature. Is that kind of what I'm hearing then?
I think that sounds good. And then just general comment section because then that'll give everybody the opportunity to just tell us what, what we didn't ask that they want us to know.
And just, and like the lead in, let everybody know, this does not mean that we have passed this. It does not mean that every child's classroom is gonna have a camera in it this year. Like we are just starting conversation, join the conversation with us and we'll figure out something that.
All right, Doug will get it done. Doug will make it happen.
Sorry, Doug. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
So I think what I'm hearing for tonight, then, we're just gonna let this sit the way that it is until we have those survey results and then we'll just circle back. I appreciate that, Mr. Smith.
And then it's Mr. Smith again with the new walk-in freezer at Skyline Middle.
Okay, thank you. Due to the number of students and meals served and the, and the small size of the current freezer at Skyline Middle, the need to expand with a new walk-in presents itself. This walk-in would be used for emergencies if another school walk-in would have a mechanical failure. This would cut down on deliveries due to space limitations. The funding for this project would come from the food and service accounts. Warren County Public Schools Facility Department, Department, Mr. Helmick had four bids for such work and Chantador Refrigeration was the lowest price. So this would be used there at the school and would also be used for extra, when we have, when we have a refrigeration goes down in one particular school, we go into almost like the William Tell soundtrack, okay? And so this would provide us the opportunity also to have space to put that as well as the increased volume of, of students eating. Since we are allowing our students under the program that we have to eat for free, it has dramatically increased the amount of meals that we are serving. And this funding comes from our food service account. And we're just asking for your recommendation. Bless him, partner.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Is there a motion?
I move that the Chantador Refrigeration be permitted to install a new walk-in freezer at Skyline Middle School to be paid for by the food service account in the amount of $42,280.52.
Is there?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Mr. Smith. And then we actually removed G for this evening. So we're moving on to H, which is the 2023-24 technology purchases over $15,000. Mr. Grant.
Good evening. The Warren County Public Schools Technology Department would like to purchase software and support for our network. These items include a Cisco renewal for their firewall services. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Cisco renew it for the network switches. And that is $17,804. Go Guardian, which includes many things. It's our internet filter, our student self-harm monitoring, our Chromebook inventory, our classroom management, and, and admin console. And that is $51,688. Next is Power School Enrollment and eCollect. That is software for data collection and enrollment. And that is $20,773.98. Next is Power School SIS, which is our student information system. That includes a grade book and all of that along with, along with the student information system. And that is $33,771.15. Next is the Palo Alto Firewall subscriptions. That's for our network security and our internet threat protection. And last is the Microsoft licensing, which includes our Windows licenses for our computers, our network licensing for all of the server licenses and our network, as well as Office for all of staff and students. And that is $51,663.38. All of that comes up to, the total cost is $199,980.85. The funding comes out of the Technology Cost Center, except for the firewall, which is part of the E-Rate program. So they pay 70% of that. And all of these items have been bid through either the E-Rate bidding process from a state contract or a sole source. Those are mouthfuls. So any questions?
Is there a motion?
I move to allow the purchase of technology software and support services from Go Guardian, Power School, E Plus, and SHI in the amount of $199,981.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Mr. Grant. Next up, we have the Sedexo Custodial Mutual Release and Settlement Agreement. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Warren County Public Schools uses Sedexo Operations LLC for custodial services. In July 2022, an amendment to the March 2nd, 2022 contract renewal was signed in the amount of $2,228,716. The amount was for the 2022-23 school year's custodial services. Due to ambiguous wording in the original RFP and contract, a misunderstanding existed whether it was a fixed cost or a cost-plus contract. Through negotiations with Sedexo, an agreement was arrived and that allowed both parties to participate equally in the overage. Services for the overage were performed. We appreciate our relationship with Sedexo. Our partnership has actually elevated our ability to provide clean facilities to our students, staff, and community use. The 2024, 23-24 Sedexo renewal specifies that the contract is a fixed cost contract agreed upon by both parties.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County School Board approves the mutual release and settlement agreement with Sedexo Operations LLC as presented and authorizes the superintendent to sign the agreement.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on this?
I just wanna say, Mr. Smith, thanks for your work on this. I know it's been a long time and it, it sounds like you've come up with a great solution and that they've been a good partner with us. So thank you.
Bye.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Mr. Smith. And then we've removed J. So we're moving on to the revision of high school fees. And Ms. Baker.
I believe you received a copy of the fees. Some stayed the same. Some of the classes that are represented with a higher use of consumables because everything else has gone up, we had to ask for an increase in those fees. What I would say is that we've never refused a child entrance into a class when fee payment was not capable of being made by the family. So I just present those fees, which include dual enrollment as well as the technical and career classes as well.
Any questions for Ms. Baker? Is there a motion?
I move that approval be given to revise the high school student fees for the 2023-24 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next up is approval for purchase over $15,000 into Y LLC?
Who's speaking on that?
Oh, hi.
Ms. Lee.
Hi, Ms. McDonald stepped out and asked me to fill in for her. So we are requesting this amount. She just handed this to me, so let me get my thoughts together. This amount to renew our subscription with N2Y Unique Learning System, which is a computer-based program designed specifically to help students with significant learning needs master their Virginia essentialized standards of learning. Students from pre-K through transition are supported with consistent, high-quality instruction, a motivating, interactive learning environment, engaging symbol support, and a path to independence. The system provides comprehensive and current instruction, including materials for teaching and learning every core subject plus life skills. There is an attached flyer that kind of goes through the program. And also a quote. I don't know if this is something that you already have access to.
We do, we have.
Okay, good. So the, the amount that we are requesting for this renewal, which includes a bundle subscription that goes through the curriculum as well as a life skills, and then also some behavioral supports of the positivity. And in the end is Inspire, which is a program that would support our students that are working toward some goals within a student support plan. So kind of a bundle with all of those services in the amount of $19,524.78.
Any questions for Ms. Lee?
Is this the program that we're already using? Yes, it is. It is the curriculum that's used in all of our pathways and connections classes.
Any additional questions? Is there a motion?
I move that the N2Y LLC contract be approved in the amount of $19,524.78.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Ms. Lee. Are you doing the next one as well?
Yeah.
We have approval for purchase over $15,000 Public Consulting Group.
So Public Consulting Group is the group that we use to develop our IEPs. It is our IEP generator system. It is a program that's presented or provided to us by Virginia Department of Education. And then we pay for additional services that are added on to that. So we would like to request the funds for the renewal of Public Consulting Group in the amount of $43,656, $656. Plus it's 8% cost settlement to be paid at the end of the school year. Within this program, it contains Virginia IEP, which is a VDOE program, as well as the Medicaid billing program, IEP translation, and Ed Plan Parent Connect. There are several attachments to this as well.
Any questions for Ms. Lee?
Could you elaborate on the 8% cost settlement to be paid at the end of the year? What, exactly that? Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot. So I, I know that within our quote for our additional services that we add on to the program, each year there is, is my understanding, I haven't reviewed the document, but there is an increase, an annual increase for those services. And I, I, that's, that's what the, the increase is. Unfortunately, like I said, I did not review this specifically before I came up. I did, and it didn't seem really super clear to me either.
It doesn't, I say.
So that was, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's actually in. At least I didn't see it when I looked through. I just wasn't sure. So what you said is kind of how I took it to mean. And I thought, oh, guaranteed like 8% pay increase.
Is it guaranteed or is it just like within that window?
What's the, what's the timeline on this approval? Can, can we put it off until we find out exactly what it is?
We can. I believe that our contract is up in August, or in, yeah, in August, mid-August. So it would be something that we would be on a time crunch because it is a program that has an annual subscription that we have to pay.
Why don't we see, because we're gonna be the special, we're gonna be the special. I was gonna say, we're meeting again for the.
The special meeting in July. We get it on the, in. Good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just gonna get that.
I'm good with that, too. Perfect.
All right, next up, Special Service Restructuring Plan 2023.
The proposal is to restructure special services to, to design to respond to new demands, develop more effective programs, increase accountability, increase student services provided by the school division. As part of the restructuring, we propose reclassifying duties assigned to a previous AT/Medicaid coordinator and additional stipends for six staff members that will coach staff on implementing programs.
Any questions for Ms. Lee? Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County School Board approve the eligibility slash Medicaid administrative assistant position, the BCBA position, and the six staff stipends as part of the special services restructuring plan.
Is there a second?
Oh, yes, madam chair, I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Next up, we have approval of additional workdays to Skyline Middle School instructional coaches contracts. Ms. Grant.
Good evening. As part of the Skyline Middle School seven-period day schedule change that was discussed at the work session in June, there are two instructional coaches that were part of that restructuring where teacher positions were moved to a instructional coach position to support teachers, new teachers, help support students in their coaching within Skyline Middle. new teachers, help support students in their coaching within Skyline Middle School. Those coaching positions, in order to match what our other instructional coaches have throughout the county, work a 205-day contract. So we're requesting your approval of adding those additional five days to the 200-day teacher contract for a cost of approximately $3,000.
And this is what we heard about during our presentation? Correct? Any additional questions for Ms. Bragg? Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the approval be given to the superintendent to extend two instructional coach contracts at Skyline Middle School to a 205-day contract. The extension of the contract will cost approximately $3,000.
Is there a second? A second? Any discussion on this? All those in favor, aye? Opposed, no? Thank you, Ms. Bragg.
Thank you.
And then our last item on the action agenda this evening is the approval of the Warren County Middle School copier lease. Mr. Grant?
I am speaking on behalf of the Warren County Middle School for this one. Warren County Middle School would like to update the copiers in their building. After reviewing the available replacement options, it is recommended that the attached DSI copiers replace the existing copiers. This contract was competitively bid through the Association of Educational Purchasing Agency, a national cooperative purchasing program for schools, governments, and nonprofits, and meets the Virginia public procurement requirements. The total cost of the 36-month lease is $89,964 or $29,988 per year. The contract was bid through, oh, I already said that part, so. Any questions?
Is there a motion?
I move that the contract in the amount of $89,964 be awarded to Document Solutions Solutions, Inc., DSI, for the lease of the copiers at Warren County Middle School, and that the superintendent be authorized to sign the lease agreement.
Is there a second? A second? Any discussion on that?
No discussion.
All right, all those in favor, aye? Opposed, no? Great, thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we're moving to the revision of the Warren County Public Schools logo. Hopefully, everybody can see.
Yeah, what do you think of it? Yeah, we, I think after our last meeting, I kind of confused Heather. I said, Heather, take care of the bird and the cat, and she was like, what do you mean, take care of the bird and the cat? And then she said, oh, the logo. So, yes, but, so if you look at that, it is drastically different from the last one, and Mr. Grant's pulling it up. Just wanted to see where the board is on this, what your thoughts are, and what you want to do moving forward as far as looking at the logo. And here's a printout if you want to see the, I'll print out the, pass that down. But you can see, we separated the two rivers to make it come into one. The cat, the cat, we fattened the cat up a little bit. So...
I think it looks great. I like it. I think the mountains look great. Change the mountains.
Yes, we wanted the mountains changed.
So...
The only feedback I received was if there would be some way to add a Virginia in there.
Virginia what?
Virginia.
Oh, yeah, because there's a few Warren Counties.
There are. There's a lot of...
There's a lot of Warren Counties.
A hostility.
I mean, I see what you're saying, but I just wonder, like, that's not really our title, like, you know, like, like our, like our school title was not like Warren County, Virginia, what was the title? Do you see what I'm saying?
No, I agree with you. But I mean, are all the other ones going to have a bird and a cat on?
Yeah, I mean, I...
I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of, you know, a distinguishing factor.
I think our logo, I think our mountain doesn't say, doesn't say. I mean, it just says Warren County Public Schools.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, it just affirms both colors.
I love how, yeah, for bright, both colors.
That's pretty cool.
And both forks, remember, and the mountains are blue ridge.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't have anything else.
Okay.
It doesn't say Virginia now, the current.
So, yeah, what we're looking for, I just wanted to bring it to you because you guys have to make a final decision on it at some point. So if you guys are liking it and you would like for me to bring it up at the next board meeting to approve it, then that's what we'll do. Otherwise, if there's any other tweaks that you want to make to it, then we can do those and then bring it back for another review. Just tell me.
I'm good for honest.
I like it. I do like it.
I like it.
So we'll add it, add it to the next monthly meeting, the August 2nd, to approve. That's fine.
Do we, when we do have that next meeting, do we get to give credit to all the people who have worked so hard on that?
So, yeah, we will, we have the name of the student that originally drew that, so we will, we will try to bring them in and do some things and recognize. And then I know Heather and Hope has probably listed people to go to, that has finalized that as far as who had him, so. We could definitely make sure to see if we can bring that.
Sounds good.
Do we also want to look at, like, how that prints, like, black and white? Like, I know that we talked about that with tech, that, you know, not everything will print in color, so we want to have a version, like, bring a version with us of how that all look in, you know, like gray scale or black.
Yeah, because I noticed just now.
There's kind of a color variation going on, which looks beautiful color. But what's that going to do when it's printed, not everything in color?
Good thoughts, really good point.
Okay, so we'll bring that to the August 2nd meeting.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Pretty impressive.
Next, we have policy regulation updates. Dr. Malinger?
That is actually Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith?
What you have before you, this is really just a clerical, this is something that actually goes back to Mr. Goodwin when Mr. Goodwin was here. He's going back through some of his, some of our policies for personnel, Section G, which is one of the largest, maybe the largest section of our manual. And he went through and he was working with Ms. Jennings and our payroll, and Mr. Valentine and Finance, and the rest of the crew there on just cleaning up some of the things that dealt with support staff and professional staff regulations. So I'll go down through some of the things that were changed, but this is a regulation, so it is, it is the more of a breakdown from the original policy itself. So policy, I'll just start here, regulations to policy, GCBD, professional staff leave and absences, and GDBD, our support staff leave and absences have been revised to reflect the following changes and/or clerical revisions, just to increase clarity in these. The very first one that we have there, which is the support staff, we just removed the references to cafeteria employees since we no longer employ them as Warren County Public Schools employees. Donated sick leave, and some of the shows on both professional and support, so I won't be redundant when I get down to the professional. Normally, we allow folks during their tenure with Warren County Public Schools, if they run into a situation, and normally it's like a medical type situation of which they've exhausted their leave, we allow for a one-time donation of leave. They can ask for a donation of leave up to 30 days. And we have run into multiple situations where people have had multiple emergency-type situations where they have run through their leave. So we thought, instead of just having it one time in your tenure, being allowed to request for leave to be donated up to 30 days, we put that in there for every five years they would have the opportunity. Now, it's used very minimum. It's not used often at all, but it has become literally a lifesaver for, for folks who get into a situation. There was, in the, in the regulation, there was a reference to leave carryover from the year 2017, and that provision is no longer necessary since we're obviously in 2023. Donated leave per year, as we mentioned earlier, that you're allowed to, every five years, to request if you need in that emergency situation leave. There was also a requirement or restriction, I should say, if someone wanted to donate their leave, we had the amount you could donate of your own sick leave as five, and that we have raised that to 10. There are other requirements that go along with that that continues. One of the things is that you can donate 10, but you still have to have, I believe it's 30 days still left in your sick leave of your own leave. Now, what does that do? Is that protects the person with a big heart, rather than saying, hey, I'm going to give you all these days, and then they get into a situation where they need some leave. So it's an opportunity for the heart to be checked by the head there in that particular situation. Payouts, when we pay out, separation, when people leave, if they leave prior to the contract being up, it's on a prorated basis of the days of which they worked. We've identified, normally in the past, we've identified a 200-day contract, a 230-day contract, a 250-day contract. But realistically, when you start looking at the calendar, not necessarily as a 200-day contract, always 200 days because of some of the adjustments and so forth we make in the contract. So we're just referring to those contracts as a 10-month contract, an 11-month contract, and a 12-month contract. So it's just, just some clerical stuff there. Open enrollment period is no longer applicable to the current plan. What that basically means is, is that I believe in that policy it is stated from July to October would be open enrollment. Really, open enrollment for, we normally do open enrollment in the start of the school year in August, and then we do it for about a two- or three-week period of time there. But open enrollment could be anything for anyone, depending upon when they start. If they start in January, we don't want them to have to come back and wait to get insurance from July to October. Once again, it's just cleaning up something that really doesn't pertain anymore. And then 10-month employees receive 10 days of sick and five days of personal. Now, inside that policy, you probably saw where it had like 12 or 12 and 1/2, and it for a sick leave, and then it says here that we're doing 10. Well, years ago, I believe it was under Mr. Drescher, who was the superintendent at the time, we received from our staff that people felt like we used to give two days of personal leave. And realistically, if you do anything with your children, at that time, I was taking my kids off to college, so if I take one off of this college and one off of that college, I've used up my two personal days. And two is really not a lot, so our staff felt like that if we were to lower the number of sick days and increase the number of personal days, that would be more beneficial to them, and it's worked out well. So this has been a practice here, the 10 days of sick and the five days of personal. This has been a practice that we've had for many years. This is just a clerical cleanup of something in the policy that's stated, or the regulation of something that we were not doing that was outdated. The next one below, in the past, the very first one, support staff hired after July 1st are eligible to transfer sick leave. This is, I'm sorry, this is with the support staff, and that is in the past, our professional staff, if they left another school division, say Falkir, for example, and let's say that they were a teacher, and let's say that they had 36 sick days, they would be able to transfer that in. Well, that policy did not exist, that opportunity did not exist for our support staff people, our instructional systems, maintenance, and those type of things. So if they work for another Virginia school division, then we would allow their sick leave to transfer in as well, but it would be another Virginia school division. Okay, so that, that was a change. The payout for sick leave, our payout for sick leave for supports, for professional staff was $15 a day per separation. Any vacation time for like 230 and 250-day employees, or any personal days for all employees, that's paid out at the per-daily DM rate, your daily rate. Sick leave, because you actually can accumulate quite a bit of sick leave over a period of time. For professional staff, that currently is $15, and it can be paid out. Support staff in the past has been $10. So therefore, we really felt like that, that should be, that should be on equal footing. So at this time, it's $15 for, for each. Go down through, let's see if there's anything different on that last one. Military leave reference was added, that was a clerical change. Simply there, it's the policy that we've always followed for military leave, if someone goes on like active duty, numbers of days they get and those type of things. For some reason, that wasn't in the, that was omitted by mistake from the support staff, although when we've had that situation, they've been given that opportunity, it's just clerically, it was not in the, in the policy. Let's see. I would note down at the very bottom, where I do have note, it says, "All support staff, including contracted bus drivers, are given one day of sick leave per contractual month for eligible employees." Okay. Where is that different? That is different this year. In the past, we have given bus drivers four days of sick leave, and that we felt like, as a staff, administrative staff, that they should, since they're a 10-month contract personnel, there are 180 days versus the 200-day contract, but we felt like they should be given the same amount of days as well as all other 10-month employees. So we have increased that up to the 10 sick days that everyone else gets. So a lot of, a lot of this is just cleaning up stuff, things that we do that we haven't changed, and I'd be happy to answer whatever questions. It's not necessarily something that the board has to approve because it's a regulation. A regulation, policies are a regulation, as a department, we may write a regulation, present it to the superintendent, the superintendent can sign off. However, anything that we feel like that we change, that's in policy or related to policy, we feel that it should come before the board at least to make you aware of some of those type of things, of what we do by practice on a daily basis.
I have a question. On the personal sick leave policy, it says support personnel will be eligible upon termination of employment. So if we're term, and I get maybe that this wasn't intended to be meant as being terminated.
It's separation, if someone leaves. They just, we use termination, it's kind of one of those things when you're in the business of work, termination actually means something else, but it is based upon separation of employment.
So do we, do we pay out this per DM if we have to fire somebody?
We pay out up until the point of which they worked.
But I'm talking about like the accumulated personal leave, we're talking about like on a permanent basis, per DM payment for the accumulated personal leave.
The personal, making sure I have this right, the leave of which someone is terminated.
It says...
And, and, so you're asking, if someone is terminated, and this is not through separation, this is through firing, basically, termination.
Right.
And that they would have X number of days left, say X number of sick days and X number of personal days. My experience up until this point, I do, unless I'm corrected here, is that we have paid those out if they had those particular days available. Now, so yes, to answer your question, some of the personal and vacation... some of the personal and vacation days are paid out. The sick leave, you have to be vested, and I believe that's either four or five years before that's paid out.
Is that all dictated by state law?
Is that, is the.
Is that required of us to do, like paying out of?
Honestly, it's a good question, but it's a question honestly that proceeds to me. It's something that we can look into, but it's always, may not be the best answer, but it's the honest answer. It's always been in there, and that's what we've followed. I'm not sure if that pertains to a law. It's, to me, it feels more like a practice.
And then the other one that came up, it's actually not a section that any edits have been made to, but it's on Section B, under the Workers' Compensation Injury Leave Regulation. B, with the incident reporting, it says that when a work-related injury or illness occurs, even if the employee does not seek medical attention, it requires that an incident report be filed within 24 hours. It's actually kind of ironic that this came up, but... So the incident report has to be filed within 24 hours of an incident. If, whose responsibility is that to make that incident report? If the supervisor is aware that an incident has occurred, isn't it on the supervisor to make that report? Not on the employee to insist that the supervisor make that report?
What we use, it's actually a combination, okay? What we use is something called Company Nurse. Company Nurse is our nurse triage hotline. When we have any injury, trips, slips, falls, those type of things, our employee, if something happens, it's up to our employee, if it's not something that happens in front of someone, to let their supervisor know that, hey, I just tripped over, whatever it may be, a wet spot on the floor, or something like that, those type of things. Our practice has been, and we're pretty good about this, is that we have Company Nurse as part of the triage, which also works with our workers' comp. And we call that nurse triage, and along with the supervisor, there has to be a supervisor there to actually verify what did happen. And that nurse then will basically identify to the employee whether they should go to seek medical attention or whatever, or none, or monitoring those type of things. But it would be up to, partly it'd be up to the employee to know, to let their supervisor know, and then once their supervisor knows, it is up to the supervisor and employee to make sure that they sit down and call Company Nurse. And that's how we monitor, and that's how we record it.
So is there an accident report that's filmed out by the supervisor?
The accident report itself is actually through Company Nurse. They, when you call in, when you call in, they ask this list of questions and so forth. And then that report automatically comes back to our HR department. It automatically goes to the workers' comp. So.
But I guess really what I'm asking is not the situation of workers' comp, but is there a way that we can make sure that our employees know how they have to be protecting themselves if, hypothetically speaking, a student were to put hands on an employee, and the employee's not hurt, but the employee realizes down the line that because an incident report wasn't filed, that they would have absolutely no consideration whatsoever moving forward. How do we make sure that employees know what their rights are? As far as like, hey, if any sort of an incident happens, your clock is ticking, you've got 24 hours to make sure that this was logged, or else like you're not protected in any way moving forward.
Well, the way we would do that with the employees is that we would have to either do some type of education or in-service on that particular policy in general, to let them know what their responsibilities are and what is the time limit of when they have to do that. Now, realistically, it may say 24 hours, but workers' comp has worked with us over the years. Sometimes some people just slip and fall, and they're like, hey, it's, you know, it doesn't feel any, it feels fine. And then a day from now, that back starts to ache, and then we go ahead and call Company Nurse. But to, how we can do that is, we can do that through like our administrative meetings with our staff, faculties. We can have stuff go out through HR. And stuff through HR basically means that we do have, like through the Talent Ed, we do have a program where we can send out an email of any particular item that someone would need to read, a document or whatever it is, they can read through that document, they can, and once they finish, they check off, and that's come back that we know that they have done that. Also, that we have on the majority of our phones throughout our school division, we do have the Company Nurse hotline and information as well. And through HR, we can do some educational-type announcements for our folks.
It's like sort of what you're asking is not really.
Related so much to this.
It's not really related to this section. It sounds more like you're like an incident, but more of an HR issue later.
Right, I guess now that we have like a new HR director, like maybe a good time to refresh that. Something, anything happens, make sure it's documented, because even if it's not an injury, if it's a anything, if it's not documented, then, you know, hey, employee will not be given consideration or protection later. You know what I mean?
I understand.
Okay. I did a bad job explaining that. Anything else on these particular areas?
Next, we have the updates of IGA-R instructional priority objectives.
So as you know, this was the first year of the updated grading policy that was put into place that included eliminating the 54, requiring that middle school students pass all four core classes in order to be promoted to the next grade level. Some of those changes that were in this new policy. So after going through the '22-'23 school year with the policy, we have a few updates that would kind of better reflect sort of the reality on the ground with the policy. So some suggested changes for your consideration and discussion tonight. There's a few changes throughout the document, and I can certainly point those out. But just going into it, the major changes include removing the work habits and social growth grades for elementary students in grades K through 5. That is a grade that received an O, S, or N. After talking with the principals who spoke to their staff, the social habits and, or sorry, the work habits and social growth grades, there's really wasn't any common consistency, not only just across the county, but even within buildings and in grade levels, as to how those scores were determined to get that O, S, or N. So the suggestion has been to remove those grades from the report card, and information about students' work habits or their behavior could be conveyed to parents in a different way besides on the report card. The other major change has to do with middle school. And two things there, one is in how middle school grades are computed, because they are on year-long courses and not semester courses like high school is. And also some wording in the retention portion of the middle school section to kind of match with what we're actually being able to do and offer for our students that perhaps didn't pass all four of those core classes. So as you move through the policy, I did add under instructional priority objectives title, maybe we can put somewhere in here that this is the grading policy. I don't think instructional priority objectives is what people associate with the grading policy. So when they go to search it, this won't pull because it doesn't say that. So somewhere in here, I feel like that maybe we could indicate that this is where you find information about the grading. And then as you move through it, page three has a change under middle school formative assessments, where we struck explained or unexplained absences and changed it to excused or unexcused absence to match the attendance policy that the board just recently approved. So a minor change there. There's, so page six, under elementary school K1, is where the first strike-through of the social growth and work habits grade would occur. So students would receive still the OSP or N grade in grades K through 1 for reading, writing, math, science, and social studies, but social growth and work habits would be removed. And then under elementary school grades 2 through 5, about the third line in parentheses there, it discussed the work habits and social growth grade in those upper grades. And that has been struck along with the descriptors of those grades because they would be getting letter grades at that point, there wouldn't be a use for the OSP. So that's the first, like I say, major change. Then on page eight is where the information starts to kind of define computing course grades at middle school. So there are middle school semester-long courses, and then there's middle school year-long courses. And so just trying to distinguish how that computation works. Because if you only apply the semester course and earning the two points in a semester, it doesn't translate nicely to a course that has four quarters. So updating that policy to add, or sorry, yeah, updating that section to add apart about computing middle school year-long course grade, which includes an increase of a minimum of two points being earned for the credit to a minimum of three points being earned. If we stick with two points, it creates a situation where the student essentially could get a D quarter 1, a D quarter 2, that's your two points, and then not do anything in the second semester and still effectively pass the course because of how we do the grade computation by points versus overall percentages. So that was just to clean that up. And then the retention piece for middle school is on page 12. It says middle school grades 6 to 9, middle schools grades 6 to 8. The 9 has to do with the promotion. I don't particularly like how that's set up, so I feel like maybe something there should probably indicate that better. But we added a paragraph that just addresses that students must pass all four core classes to move to the next grade level, and that those who fail a core subject have some options for recovering that credit, such as attending summer school, retaking the course during the next school year, and other opportunities that may be available based on administrator discretion. And those would be sort of those special circumstance cases where essentially you have maybe an eighth, or yeah, an eighth grader who has failed, but their age is going to require us to move them on in some way. They're still going to be held responsible for that eighth-grade coursework that they failed, but summer school may not be, it's not an option to recover four credits in summer school. You can essentially recover two, so they would have two additional courses if they failed all four. Their age needs us to have something in place for them to kind of get on the high school track so that they don't get in the situation of aging out, but at the same time, still holding them responsible to passing the four core subjects. So those are just some things that, you know, based off of implementing the policy this school year that we felt like needed cleaned up in the policy a little bit, just so that, for clarification and that sort of thing when parents ask questions. The last small change was just on page 13, that students that do not pass all four classes, it said may be recommended for retention. We changed it to will be. That is how the middle schools enacted the policy this year. If a student had failed a course, a retention letter was sent, was sent home. And then like I said, we work with them to get enrollments in summer school. Some students will be, you know, maybe have to double up, they may have to take Math 6 and Math 7, you know, something like that. But just trying to help the policy fit with the reality on the ground. So those are the major changes.
Are there questions for Ms. Bragg?
The only other thing I'd like to throw out has been a discussion that we've had, several people have brought it to my attention as well, is somehow reordering the policy so that there's an elementary section, a middle school section, and a high school section. Right now, you kind of have to read through the whole thing in order to find the bits and pieces. I will say, I think it's like that, because when I started to try to do the sections, I found myself typing a lot of the same information over. Maybe that's what we need to do. I'm happy to present that at, you know, the next meeting or at a work session as a possible option. I would prefer it be elementary, middle, high, all in one place. But once I got into the restructuring, I sort of understood why maybe it didn't happen the first time around. So I can present that for your review next time.
I'd like to see it that way.
Yeah. And like I say, it may just get into where we have a little bit of a duplication of language, but I think it would be easier than asking parents to read 14 pages to find out on the last page something about elementary schools.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Bragg.
Thank you.
And then unless I have any objections from the rest of the board, Ms. McDonald is back, and she's able to explain that 8% to us for item M, if you'd like to come back up. The approval for the purchase over $15,000 on M.
Sorry about that. All right, so the 8% is what is billed to us after we receive our final settlement check for the entire year. So we have two ways of being billed with PCG with Medicaid, and one is a flat rate. The second is contingent upon that cost settlement. So in 2021, we was billed $5,610.80. 2122, we were billed $12,182.78. And 2223, we were billed $8,956.60.
So are you saying that that 8% has to do with how much of the service we used?
Yes, how much revenue we bring in.
Instead of just picking a flat rate from the start?
Correct, because it's how much we bring in. So it looks like in 2122, we had more Medicaid, I'm sorry, Medicaid claims. And I think that's when we were billing transportation. So with our new Medicaid eligibility admin assistant, we would be able to bill transportation again, possibly.
Is there a motion on that?
I move that the Public Consultant Group, Inc. contract be renewed in the amount of $43,656 plus cost settlement.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? Callers in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Ms. Salons, if you could read us into opposed session, please.
This motion is made that this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711. The school board desires to discuss the following matter in a closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711A1, Discussion, Consideration, or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining, or Recognition of Employees of the School Board, Specifically, an Employee Personnel Issue.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Grant, can you do a call? Mr. Grant, can you do a call?
Certainly. Ms. Salins.
Aye.
Mr. Rinaldi.
Aye.
Dr. Pence.
Aye.
Mrs. Love.
Aye.
Thank you.